Rissy, yeah, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing. There's a section of the meeting for public comment and we'll ask folks to raise their hand in Zoom if they want to do public comment over Zoom and then we'll pass them to unmute and speak to the council.
I have 6:54. Is that the time you have or?
That looks about right. Yeah, John said he'll start again recording at 6:55, so that'll be any minute now. I went ahead and shared tonight's agenda on Zoom chat if anybody needs it.
Okay.
How are you?
Good, yourself?
I'm good, thank you.
I don't think we officially met.
Mike.
Dwayne. Nice meeting you, Dwayne.
You as well, thank you.
Bring it down. Yes, bring it down.
For those of us just joining us on Zoom from the public, we're going to have a period for public comment. We're not quite there yet.
I've heard stories of worse things happening with Pikeville.
Right?
Couple close calls. We started getting that shout last week.
I thought we was gonna get him because we were on site and they were putting law enforcement folks down. He wouldn't be.
Yeah, but what happened was that Wood Center where we started, everybody's getting the shout from enough people. At the end of the day, they had shots, they had vaccine left over. But at that point, we called, maybe I got anybody, we'll be right down.
Well, that's very nice.
On my phone that Thursday, they threw like 30 security way. They didn't do this wrong, so we need that point out because the calls will come.
Hey Ted, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Is it going to be mandatory for the officers to have?
No, can't make it mandatory.
I can hear you, Scott.
I didn't know.
Ted, can you hear me?
I heard two guys didn't even want it.
I'm going to call the meeting to order in a moment. Can we please quiet down? Mr. Robinson, can you go ahead and try again?
Yeah, can you, can you, what's all that noise in the background?
It's talking in chambers.
Can you, can you hear me clear Ted? I'm going to mute my, turn my video off because I'm working tonight, so it'll be like calling in on here, so.
All right. Can you hear me in chambers?
We can hear you briefly. It's a little low, but we can hear you. As long as no one else is talking, it should be fine.
All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. We're going to have to be as quiet as possible. We're having difficulty with sound. And Scott, Scott Robinson is very, very low and I'm, I'm having issues too. It's an internet issue on my part, so. All right, so we're going to call to order the Borough of Morris, Barsville Regular Borough Council Meeting for Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. Can we please stand for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation.
Nation.
Under God.
God.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. All right, Virginia, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Rivella. Councilman Bowers.
Here.
Councilwoman Halaho.
Here.
Councilman Nick. Councilman Nickel.
Here.
Councilman Parker.
Here.
Councilman Paul.
Here.
Councilman Robinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Sherlock.
She's here.
Yeah, she's here. I can see her, but her.
Here. Okay. And Councilman Jaeger.
Here.
Okay. Everyone's here. For announcements, I would like to welcome aboard our newest council member from the first ward, Dwayne, it's pronounced Nicole, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Welcome aboard. I had the opportunity to, to meet him in person at his swearing in down at the district court. So just everybody give him a warm welcome and welcome aboard and let's get ready. All right. Let's move on to, oh, first, let me, let me state this. We're going to have an executive session at the end of this and it's going to be for personnel. Also, we're going to be removing from action items, motion 9A, that will be moved to February. And we will also have an additional motion which will become 9B because 9B will move up to 9A. And 9B will be a motion to advertise the position of interim and or full-time borough manager. And the reason for this is, let me pull up the statement from Mr. Mitchell, I don't want to. And it says, due to a serious medical condition, the borough manager has advised council to prepare for every eventuality to prudently keep the municipal government functioning. And that's all I will say publicly about his condition. So that motion to advertise the position of interim and or full-time borough manager is 9B.
Excuse me, Mr. Parker?
Yes.
For those who might not have the agenda in front of them, 9A was the comprehensive, was the approval of the comprehensive plan, correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
That's been moved to February.
Parker, can I ask why? I'm okay with it. I'm just wondering why we're moving it to February.
Part of it is some confusion as to whether or not it was posted and the unavailable availability of Mr. Mitchell at this time, I think it's prudent to move it to February.
Okay, also, I'd like to recommend, if we could, to have somebody from the planning commission come in and give us a quick overview on what changed. I get what's in there, but to go through and compare it to the prior one would be a little bit of a daunting task. If they can come in and give us an overview of the things that actually changed, that would be helpful.
Okay, we'll reach out to them and have somebody do a presentation in February before our vote.
Thank you.
Ted, I also have a question about that. Because we, we did approve the, in December for the development, so is the planning commission also taking that into account?
This was a last-minute poll because of the confusion with it, with it being posted publicly or not, and I just thought it was prudent at this time, given Mr. Mitchell not being available to just move it to February. It was, it was a council issue.
Ted, can you just speak up because it's hard to hear you?
Yeah, I know. I'm, I'm using my iPad instead of my laptop because I was having conductivity problems with that. I said we moved it, it, it's simply moved it because of an issue with, on Borough, the Borough slash council side about confusion of being advert, how, how it was advertised and made public for the public to view it, so we just thought it was prudent to pull it until February. All right. We're going to move on to five public comment.
Mr. Parker, we have one, Jane Berger.
For those of you on Zoom, please hold until after the room gets to speak and then we'll take you one by one. Thank you.
Good evening.
See. Name and, name and address and you have three minutes after that.
Sure Ted, thank you, Mr. President. Jane Berger, 90 West Maple Avenue, Morrisville Borough. I'm glad, Mr. President, that you have pulled item 9A because that was going to be my recommendation. And I suggest that perhaps you use the planning commission. Next Monday would be too soon, but the second Monday in January, you maybe have a full presentation of this revised plan at their meeting where it would allow for more opportunity for interaction in case anyone has any, any questions. If that's not possible, certainly at your February meeting, to know what has changed from the current plan and perhaps what has changed from the draft plan that was on the website, I believe it was in August. I've looked through it. I didn't see a proposed final one there, but very often we overlook maps and charts. So I was curious and I thought I should look at this. I call your attention to map one, existing land uses. And given this additional month, I suggest you go over it because there are several errors. I have a feeling this is something that maybe just carried over from plan to plan. It gives you the land uses. It's very nicely color-coded, but several street names are missing. And I went to look at my house and it's the bright yellow for single-family dwelling. My 1919 house was single, but in the Great Depression of the 30s, the attic was converted and it has been a multi-level two-family home since then. So it really should be the pumpkin color. Also, there's a professional building across from the shopping center that has not been a single-family dwelling since the late 40s. And looking at the color for residential rental units, given the high percentage of rentals we have in the borough, I know that several conversions and other properties are not on here. This summer, I had the opportunity doing census work and I know from, from Stockton, some places in the manor and on North Pennsylvania, there are definitely homes that were once single-family but are now multi-dwelling, either two or three families. So there, there needs to be a way with the tax map or working with the tax director, collector, since the sanitation bills are, you know, now through your tax bill, to use the, the tax map to try and correctly capture all the residential units that are now multi-family. I will leave this with Mr. Micah because I did list on the back of it some of the street names that I could not find.
30 seconds.
And I also want to share where there's space and where there's gray. The code for transportation, which I think would include the bridge commission and the railroad tracks, is listed as vacant rather than its gray color. So it might be worthwhile in this timeframe to take a look at this and make sure that it really is updated to reflect the borough's land use today. So I, I thank you for that and I just want to comment, I did see the public notice, you will be going to a court of comment, please, in Doylestown, February 1st for approval for tax increase over 30 mils for the general fund. Obviously, those monies won't be available, so it won't affect your expenditures in this first quarter. But it is noteworthy to think the first time in modern history that you weren't able to get a court date before December 31st. Thank you again, COVID-19.
Do we have anyone else at Borough Hall? Okay, Terry, who do we have online who wants to make a comment?
I'll start with folks with their hand raised. Just one second, Borough Hall is sort of noisy. All right, Deborah Colgan, if you can unmute, I'll have you go first.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Deborah Colgan, 120 West Hendrickson Avenue. Thank you for removing the comprehensive plan from the agenda. The comprehensive plan is an important guide that helps community fulfill its vision and the borough spent a lot of time and money creating the elements of this, of this one. It deserves a thoughtful review by both council and members of the public. I do know that there were some, there were a number of errors in the draft, like Jane said with maps. There were some incorrect calculations, that kind of stuff, that would list properly correctly. There were a lot of inconsistencies with the maps. So I do know that they were supposed to correct those, or at least some of those. I was surprised that it was really, the comprehensive plan was even on the agenda since there wasn't really, the, the, the plan that you were actually approving wasn't even available to the public. And I think that's, I, I was kind of hoping for more transparency with this new council. And I believe that you would let us know what you're, what you're considering. Let us see it and give you input before you make any decisions. And I'm asking that you do so going forward. We need to be partners with you as we look at the Williamson Park proposal. Some of us know our positions, some four against, and, and we need the opportunity to make our case to you and to each other. There's might be some people that are unsure and they want more details to make an informed opinion. This is a big decision and we must make it together. Ultimately, it's going to be in the hands of just eight council members. And I have to believe that no matter what, and no matter how painful and how long it takes, that each of you wants to learn all you can and wants to hear out everyone's opinion. You carry a heavy responsibility. So for transparency as well as effective community collaboration, please provide the details of the work that is being done within the borough administration to move this project forward. How much time was devoted? What activities were done? And then of the overall process, we don't really understand what, what the process is, what the next step and how you'll engage us at each step as we move forward. And at each meeting, we should have a detailed report on the months of select Morrisville activities that occurred that month and they should be shared with all of us. I really ask that we all work together to decide Morrisville's future. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready for the next person?
Yes, please.
I see a hand up from Mary's iPad. Mary's iPad, are you on Zoom? There she is. You'll have to unmute yourself. You're still muted.
I am unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right.
Please state your name and your address and you have three minutes after that.
Okay, Mary Renda, 343 Crown Street, Morrisville. And I, my comment was also about transparency. Yeah, I I'm having a hard time with the way the public is being involved in your meetings, in the council meetings. The agenda goes up on late on a Friday for the Monday meeting. And, and then, yeah, things happen like the posting of the comprehensive plan where the draft plan was up for months and months, but then there were revisions made and they were never made available to the public to look at before this meeting. And I think, you know, if we're going to have community participation, if we're going to have transparency and local government, we need to have documents such as this that are important to the, the path forward of the bureau, of the borough to be made available to the public so the public can become familiar with them and comment on them to council if they wish. Also, I would like to emphasize that the Williamson Park project, I think we need to be informed as to what steps have been taken by borough staff. I would like the managers' report to reflect what interactions the staff and borough staff and professionals have had with Morrisville LLC and what was done and if there were meetings, a brief synopsis of the meeting. The same with the council members. I think that the public should know when council members meet with Morrisville, with select Morrisville LLC, what the meetings were about and a brief synopsis of the meeting. And I think this should be made available to the public at council meetings. Thank you very much. Please try and keep, just please try and keep us informed. Please try and, and you know, be transparent with us and give us timely notice of things that are happening. Thanks. I'm finished.
Thank you. Terry, we're ready for the next person.
Okay. I don't see anybody with a feature on, but is that Rissy? You've got your physical hand up? Okay, you'll go next. Please unmute yourself.
I didn't see any feature. I apologize. So, am I coming in?
Yep.
Yes.
You could state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Joshua. I live at 40 Union Street. I'm a little bit new to this, so bear with me. I kind of have a little bit of a speech, there's a little bit impassioned, so I would appreciate.
Excuse me, your, your first name is Joshua, your last name is R A H. Is that your last name?
No, sorry, it's K U N T Z. That's a handle that I just use on Zoom.
Oh, no, that's perfectly, you're perfectly committed. I just, for, for their, for our records, we must have. Yeah.
That's fine. Yeah, so you got that.
Is your address one more time? I'm sorry.
Was that 40 Union Street?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, you have three minutes.
Okay. Thinking about the phrase, local park destroyed to make way for luxury apartments and retail outlets, sounds like the plot of a kid's morality tale about how those who care more about money are evil and we need to care about the things that are good for the community. The fact that this is a reality in the 21st century, after we are abundantly aware of the forces of gentrification and just outright economic assault on anyone lower than the upper middle class sadly feels all too like the year that we just got out of, which is to say a bit of an insult to our sanity. It feels like a corrupt action, just on its superficial look, and to extract resources from the many to benefit those of the few. In this case, the resource being space, not wilderness per se, but rather the space of public's, public use, space with the intention and purpose for benefiting people. That's the focus of the space and that's the focus of a park, right? In an era of increasing wealth disparity, to siphon yet another resource from the people's psychological and spiritual well-being from this town, it feels rather wrong, to put it mildly, and sadly, in the keeping of the trends of this country. I think that there are other avenues that moneyed interests might be able to use to increase and improve our community, like investing into homes, to repair businesses, to invest into businesses, and we have an entire infrastructure that could do with assisting for us aesthetic and functional utilities. But no, they've chosen park. It seems like the park is the desire, which seems a little bit out of sorts with those things that could be improved upon. If we care about the community, we need to repair the community, I feel, not to replace it. Now, I have lived in Bucks County for about 25 of the 32 years of my life and I've been pretty sickened by watching, by watching what the wealthy has done to beautiful farms and forests of this county. A great recent example is what's going on up in New Hope right now with hotels and bars with very high prices being invested and they're blocking views of the rivers. They're taking away from the natural peer appeal of not only the towns' rust aesthetics, but also from the nature itself. Now, as much as I can muster perhaps some happiness for the owners of these buildings, I do feel that they are made to appeal to people of wealth, people who are travels and, and just people who have excess money, but it's not really helping those of us who are in the area and it's in fact making it harder for us to live our lives and to enjoy the areas around us. This county seems to be bending to the will of money. This is what the impression seems to be from the outlook. And I just think that if we want to live up to the better ethics of our society, we have to invest and to improve.
30 seconds.
Have not building things for those who already have enough. I think that we need a better park, not a community center or a thing of retails. And I just wanted to kind of make that voice heard in this. I hope that I didn't come off as too rude. I appreciate the time that I was giving and thank you. I suppose that's it.
Thank you. Terry, do we have any members?
Sorry, were there other members of the public on Zoom who wanted to speak? Jackie, it looks like. You can unmute yourself, then state your name and address.
All right, my name's Jackie Carroll, 36 Union Street, Morrisville. Um, I'm not a fan of the development plans at the Williamson Park and I see a lot of flaws in it and a lot of it's what Josh just said, it was very on the nose. I feel like I can't say it as good as that, but those are like all my views. I see a lot of potential issues, a lot of possible like bad things happening with the businesses that are already established in town. And I like, I think it's silly to put them to pick the park that everyone uses when there are a lot of abandoned buildings that we should like rehabilitate that instead of just destroy, destroy, destroy. So I, I'm highly against it and I hope you all hear my concerns and take them into consideration. All right, it's a short one, so that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Were there any other members of the public on Zoom who wanted to address the council?
Oh.
Sorry, is that Shannon? You had it unmuted there for a second, but you're muted at the moment. I think you got it unmuted now.
All right, thank you. My name's Shannon Carroll, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. My name's Shannon Carroll and I live at 49 Okay, thanks. My name's Shannon Carroll, and I live at 49 North Delmar, Morrisville, PA. I'm just chiming in to say I'm against this also, and Josh did say it very perfectly how I feel also about the environment, the gentrification, not taking care of things that are already here. Yeah. Because I just wanted my, my voice to be heard, even though this is short also, but I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, did any other member of the public on Zoom want to speak tonight? I'm not seeing anyone.
Hey, can you hear me?
Oh, Joshua, are you there?
Hey, that's me. I'm, I live at 49 North Delmore, right across the street from the park.
Can you state your full name for the record, please?
Sure, Joshua Adair.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, I'll, I'll keep it brief. I've talked to a lot of the people. Like I said, I live across the street from the, from the park. I've been talking to people about this. Nobody's for this. Nobody in town wants this. The people don't want this, and we're going to fight this tooth and nail. So I, you know, I'm sorry to say, like, this, you don't have the public's, you don't have the public in mind with this. And I just don't understand you're going to take away a public place where during COVID-19, it's, it's an ideal place for people to kind of get outside and get away and social distance. I mean, this is, this is the wrong thing to do, and it just really, it's, it's upsetting to see a place so special. You know, just kind of under, under the cover night being turned into something that we don't want, you know? I don't think that's fair to the people. I don't, I don't agree with it. No, that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you.
Let me see, a hand up from Beebe or Beeb?
Yep, um, that's my last name. My full name is Lauren Mary Beebe, and I live at 57 North Delmore, and I just wanted to chime in and voice my support with what everyone else has just said, Josh and Josh and Shannon and Jackie. I live right across from the park. I'm not in support of redeveloping it. I think it takes away a key landmark and source of positive recreation for the community, and I I'll just restate what Josh just said. I don't really think anybody in the community's for it. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Yeah, as far as I can tell, that's the end of public comment from Zoom.
Okay, all right, we're going to close public comment then. And we are going to go on to item six, which is approval of the minute, six A.
Ted, Ted, can you hear me? I think we have one more that popped on here down the bottom. John Yuderson, did he just pop on or?
Yeah. My name is.
It looked like he wanted, he popped on to do the public comment. There, we might have been having issues with his connection.
All right, well, one more.
Don't worry, it'll be quick. My name is John Capra. I live at 57 North Delmore, right across from the park. It is the first thing that I see when I walk out the door. It is, it's just such a peaceful place for me to look out as soon as I walk out the door. It's also, you know, one of the only things that Morrisville has going for it. It's the only thing that, that people want to go to Morrisville for is this park. It's the only reason why people that live here want to go there. I mean, I don't even know what you would be inviting these new people that would be living here to even do. Like, what activity would they be able to get into if they don't even have a park that they can hang out at and that they can social distance, especially during these times? You know, it's, it's a very special place, and it's, yeah, that's all I got. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. All right. We're going to move back on to item six, which is approval of the minutes. Six A, approval of the minutes for the Borough Council Regular Meeting of November 16th, 2020. Can I have a motion?
No moves.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to seven. Seven A is the treasurer's report.
Mr. President, I'm sorry to bother you. There were seven council members that were eligible to vote for that. So it said, the vote was seven oh, correct?
Seven oh.
I think everybody's here.
No, what I'm saying wasn't, you have, you have a new member who wasn't here last, who wasn't here last month for the meeting.
So, Mr. Nicole, would you like to abstain?
No, I'm good.
Well, I, I think that if he had gone back and watched the video, he could vote correct.
Okay, that's fine then. I just want to make sure, I want to make sure for record that that's, that's stated, so that's fine. I have, I have no objection.
So the motion passes eight zero. All right, back on to seven, finance. Seven A is the treasurer's report, which everyone got. Seven B is a call for a motion to approve the bill, approve and pay the bill list. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Parker, this is Mr. Bowers. I just have a comment on the bills.
Sure.
While I was looking through our solicitor bills, it seems that our solicitor is been engaged to write a number of memos with legal opinions to certain members on council. And the only way I knew that was from looking through the bills, so I'd just like to request that anytime memo is written giving legal advice or legal knowledge of, of Borough Code or anything else where questions are answered, I think all of council should be copied on it, so we're all aware.
Okay. So, no, I'd just say the way, the way we do it is we send it to the manager, usually the Borough Manager, and it's up to the Borough Managers. I thought they were normally distributed in their weekly packets. That's how it usually is supposed to be anyway, so. That's, we, we report directly to that, to your manager, and when those.
I got it already. There's, there's a disconnect, so.
Okay, I'm just telling you that those were, those were sent to, to your manager, so it's not, there were, there was no, yeah, okay, no problem.
Yeah, I don't think it was, it was a comment against the solicitor.
No, I know. I'm just saying they were done and sent in in normal course of business.
To another, it was actually something that I looked at, and I believe it had to do with a business tax that was actually already answered in our, it was already in a box from a while back, so we were duplicating efforts by asking the same question and getting the same opinion. But so, but when, when I questioned the Borough Manager about that, I think what happened was the request didn't go through him, but he wasn't able to push back and say, here's the information. We already have it. So just a heads up to the rest of council on that.
Anyone else? We have a roll call, please, Virginia?
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Alahal?
Yes.
Mr. Nicole?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero. All right, moving on to eight, which is reports. Eight A, a mayor's report. I don't believe the mayor is present, so we'll move on to eight B, the police chief's report, if he has one.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I'd like to give you a little brief review of our 2020 crime stats. We are down 24% in Part One crimes compared to 2019. Part Two crimes, we are down 15% compared to 2019. The biggest cut in crime was the number of thefts. And I attributed that to keeping a couple of our, our known people who like to take other people's things by keeping them in jail. Very successful with that. Looking at our finances for the year, for the seventh straight year in a row, the police department has ended the year within its budget, which I'm very happy with. We have an event coming up on January 24th at 3:30 to 5:30. It is called Walking Wild Black, Loves the Answer. This is a film and then a discussion with members of different police departments, which Morrisville will be, is a sponsoring agent with this. If anybody wants to sign up, you can go on to the T Center's website and sign up for it. I will be participating again, along with two of my officers, along with Falls Township, and I believe Yardley, one of the district attorney's office, and that's all I have.
Thank you, chief. All right, HC and managers' report. I don't know if there is one. Okay. Hearing that we don't have one, then eight D is committee reports. Do we have anybody? All right, we want to act. Nine A, the call for a motion to approve a tax refund in the amount of $608.35 to Scott and Ellen Davis for parcel number 24-006-060, temporary assessment reduction due to a 2019 fire.
So moved.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, any?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Parker, was this Justin the second?
Yes.
Thank you, Justin.
Discussion. All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, moving on to nine B, call for a motion to authorize Borough to advertise the position of interim and or full-time Borough Manager. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, discussion.
So, do we have a copy of the job description for a Borough Manager?
I believe there's still one in the Borough. We're working on getting all the documents together. Just so everyone knows, the resumes will be going to the solicitor so that they don't go directly to the Borough. They will, they will handle the intake of the resumes and will, in cooperation with the Borough, remove those resumes of those who are obviously not qualified. And those remaining resumes will be reviewed by a Borough Council Committee for that, and they will go through them, and we'll have recommendations for top three, five, whatever, at which time they'll be voted upon at an appropriate meeting in the future.
Mr. Parker, where would we, where are we advertising this? Locally? Regionally?
It's going to be, Mr. Flager, would you?
One of it will, yeah, we'll do a look. We'll, you'll be in, there's a consortium, Bucks and Monco. They'll put it out to all their members. We'll also ask the Boroughs, Borough Association, and we'll ask the, even the Second Class Township Code Association, because, you know, a lot of times the managers are interchangeable and what have you. They go back and forth, and we hopefully will get a, and I just want to point out for the public, and I know council knows this, that this is at the request of our current manager, Scott Mitchell.
Right.
Could you repeat the process one more time? So I, I'm sorry, Ted, I couldn't hear you. There is a job description, yes, no?
I believe there's still a current job description from the last hire. We're in the process of pulling all those documents.
And the second part is, what is the process to, for the, you're going to advertise, and then the resumes are going to the solicitor?
Yes, they're going to go to the solicitor's office. The solicitor will go through the resumes, and those that are obviously unqualified will be excluded. The remaining ones will be presented to a committee that we will have to form from council, and they will go through them and present recommendations for them. I'm still working on how we're going to handle this, but that's, that's the gist of it right now. That might change. And then we will hopefully narrow it down to three, five, something, a smaller number, and we will then vote on it at a meeting in the future.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
In the interest of transparency, is there any reason why all of council wouldn't get the ones that aren't rejected by the solicitor? Obviously, there's going to be people that, that show up with their resume that have no experience. I get that. I don't need to see those. But I think for the interest of transparency, if you want me to copy.
I don't, I'm not, you're misunderstanding. Everybody will see all the resumes.
Thank you.
But rather than having eight, we can't, obviously, Sunshine Law, we can't communicate other than in a meeting, but, you know, a, a committee designed to, to, you know, go through the resumes and make recommendations. They're not deciding for us. They're just going to make recommendations of what they believe are the top three. They may not be your opinion, may not be mine, of what the top three or five, or whatever number we come up with that we want to decide. That's what we're going to vote on at a, at a, at a council meeting.
Yeah.
And again.
I just want to point out that we're, Mr. President, we're not going to discard any of the resumes we get.
No, 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 but you're going to make recommendations that this person is, you know.
We're going to give all of them to the Borough. You can look through, you can look through all of them. Yeah, we're not, that's not our job.
If this is presenting indication, you're lucky to see three that are qualified.
I'm, I, it's, it's a small pool of people, so, you know, I don't expect to have 20 candidates that we have to beat our head over, but, you know.
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not, just so everybody understands on council, we're not excluding, you know, people so that you can't see them. It's just, you know, if they're, obviously, they worked at a Borough Hall, but they were, I don't want to malign janitors, but they were a janitor and never had any administrative experience. Obviously, we don't want to waste our time with them, but, you know, as they come in, everybody will get them in their box and be able to review them.
And Mr. Parker, okay, well, actually, answer the question, because we're still able, after looking at that, we can still have our own thoughts about it, that we can pass off to whatever that little board, whoever that ends up being.
I mean, and we'll, we'll, I, I'm assuming we'll have to have, you know, we'll, we'll have recommendations. We might like somebody that doesn't even make the top three. You're not, I, I envision it, you're not going to be restricted to only vote for certain things, but I, I would like some consensus as to what we think are the best three. Or five.
I have a question.
Sir?
Um, Ted, for this, we advertise this, is this going to be advertised as an interim position? Is it going to be, you know, maybe for a couple of months? Like, let's say Scott comes back in June. You know, if we're going to hire someone, we have to, you know, I'm sure we have, we're going to, we're going to let them know that, you know, it could be long-term, it could be short-term. We, we don't know. I mean, because, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's still Scott's job, unless Scott is going to resign. I didn't see anything where Scott was going to resign, but, I mean, it's still, it's, it's, you know, it's his job. It's basically, you know, he's out on leave right now, so I wouldn't want to bring someone in and then tell them in July, you know, sorry, we don't need you anymore. And, you know, let, let's say they gave up something, they're doing something now, and they give it up, you know, and then we turn around in July and say, you know, well, thanks for, you know, thanks for helping us out, but we don't need you anymore.
To, to that question, which is, is a good one, Scott, the, but the, the motion does read interim with a possible, so.
And or, yes.
And or, so I think that that's how we have to word it, as well as being very upfront with whoever might be interested.
Okay.
But it is, it's a, it's a hard fence to be walking on. I, I agree.
I mean, I, again, that's the wording that was recommended, simply because we currently still have a Borough Manager, and this was his decision to advise us to go ahead with this. I don't want to, I don't want to say, out of respect to Mr. Mitchell, I really don't want to say too much about his condition. That's, that's his, he gave me a pretty tight line. say too much about his condition, that's, that's his, he gave me a pretty tight line as to what, to, to, you know, to talk about in public. But I, the need for an interim at this point, I think, is, you know, is very important, and the possibility of it becoming a full-time position, based on my conversations, is a real, real good possibility.
Ted, I would recommend we, we stop getting into that now, we discuss that in executive session.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I agree, but I think everybody's stuck on the interim part, so.
Yeah.
That wasn't even the recommendation of Mr. Mitchell at this point, but.
Ms. Parker, I was just, I'd like to comment that, if we remember that, that Mr. Mitchell was, he was interim until it became full-time, so it's all, you know, it's all a possibility, and I think anyone interested will figure it out, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mitchell was named interim, and then during the selection process, he was.
Right. Exactly.
Right.
Borough Manager. Just a quick question, when we go out for advertisements, are we gonna, are we gonna advertise with the last Borough Manager job description that went out? Or are we just gonna advertise for a Borough Manager position, and then in the interim, figure out what we want for qualifications?
I, I would think we would advertise first and see what's available, and then.
Well, Ms. Parker, I would think that we would have to have some qualifications in that, in that advertisement. And there is, there is a, an ordinance, there's a Borough Manager ordinance. I don't know whether that's been followed or not, pardon me?
Mr. President and Madam Councilwoman, we have, we have an ordinance, we also have what we did last time, we will look at it, we will update it, and we will, we will run it by Council President, and for approval before it goes out, if that's okay with council.
Very good.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right. I don't think we need a roll call on this, we're just gonna do a.
Could you, could you read the motion again, because you had all the conversation between interim versus full-time, just so we're clear?
I thought we voted already, did we not?
No.
Oh, not yet?
We're having discussion. All right. Motion is in order to advertise the position of interim and/or full-time Borough Manager. We have a motion in a second, we've had discussion, is there anybody else who wants to add anything? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight zero.
My only comment is that we should all pray for his health.
Yes.
Which one's, which one's the first Willow Grove? And that's gonna be on eight o'clock? I think there's a first Willow that's leaving early.
All right. We're going to move on to Council Committee slash Board and Commission appointments. Give me a second, I'm gonna be scattered all over. All right, the first one up is for the Environmental Advisory Council, it's a one, it's one three-year appointment to expire on 12/19/2023, and we have one letter from Nicole Ramon.
I got it.
I'd like to nominate, is that what Scott said, nominate her? No.
Okay. Well, if you want to nominate, go ahead.
Oh, I don't know what we're, I don't know what the process is, I'm sorry, I thought Scott said something.
Let's, we only have one letter, I mean, so, do we have anybody else who would like to nominate somebody else, or?
You don't have a Willow that's leaving here at eight?
You should tell Scott to mute.
Scott, could you mute your, your mic if you're?
There you go. Hardworking man.
All right. So we only have, we only have one person who's put in a letter of interest, and I've heard no other nominations, so.
So Ted, did we advertise these enough to, to have enough interest?
I mean, they've been, they've been up on, on the website for a while.
The website, the cable channel.
Yeah. So.
Facebook.
I think we have to figure out more ways to, to reach the public, but that's just my own opinion.
All right. So, hearing no other nominations, all in favor of Nicole Ramon?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes on eight zero. All right, the next appointment is the Economic Development Corporation, there's one three-year appointment to expire on 9/30/2023. We have one letter from Christine, one letter of interest for reappointment from Christina Morganti. So, do we have anybody else? Do we have anybody else who would like to nominate somebody else? All right, hearing none. Having a nomination for Christina. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms., Mr. Parker, could I just mention that these two women, Nicole and Christine, are actually, sit on these, these council appointments.
Yes, I said they were being, they were.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say that. Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Okay. The next appointment is for the Morrisville Municipal Authority. It's a one five-year appointment to expire on January 4th, 2026. We have a letter of interest from Jeff Johnson, who is currently on the board, and we have another one from Justin Bowers. So, we're gonna.
I would like to nominate Jeff Johnson, if I may.
I'd like to nominate Justin Bowers.
Okay, so we have two names, two nominations, do we have anybody else who would like to nominate somebody? Okay. Hearing none, we're gonna close that, and what I guess we'll do with this one is, since we have two names, when your name is called, you'll state the person that you're voting for, and the person who has a majority has the position. Virginia, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Justin Bowers.
Ms. Alahal?
Jeff Johnson.
Mr. Nicole?
Jeff Johnson.
Mr. Paul?
Jeff Johnson.
Mr. Robinson?
Jeff Johnson.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Jeff Johnson.
Mr. Jaeger?
Justin Bowers.
And Mr. Parker?
Jeff Johnson. Mr. Johnson has a majority, so he'll be reappointed. Moving on to the Planning Commission. There are two four-year appointments to expire on December 31st, 2025. We have a letter of interest from Don Doreto, who is currently on there, on the commission, and then we have a, another letter from Steven Ahmad, who is also currently on the commission, and then we have a letter of interest from Stephen Hope. So we have three. I guess we can just assume there, I mean, do we have anybody else who wants to nominate somebody else, let's maybe get that out of the way.
Ted, could you tell, I, I had more than that when going through the packet, could you name the names again?
Don Doreto, Steven Ahmed, and Stephen Hope.
It, wasn't there Stephen Ware, or is that Steven Ahmed?
I, you know, I thought I saw Steve Ware, but I cannot, I had a list.
Steve Ware is our zoning officer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't even know why.
I believe his name.
He put a letter in.
It was addressed as one of the people at one point, from one of the people putting in a letter, his name was in there as well.
It was, right? But it wasn't on the list that I, that I, I had compiled for, for the meeting, so he's our zoning officer, so he doesn't need to be appointed.
Right. Wasn't, I wasn't sure whether that was there, but.
Yeah.
I, I have a quick question though, this says it's a four-year appointment that ends at the end of 25? I, I don't know, is that correct? Yes.
Yeah, I think it should be 2024.
2024.
Yes.
So, it's a, two four-year appointments to expire on December 31st, 2024. So. We have three, three people, I guess we'll.
And if we can make this, do it this way, we've done this before, we'll nominate one, I'd nominate.
Okay, yeah, we'll do it, I was trying.
And we'll try to do one at a time, I'll nominate Don Doreto.
Okay, so we're gonna nominate Don, Don Doreto, and then we're going to.
If he doesn't get it, you move on to the next.
And we vote, I'm sorry, Mike, how we, so are we voting on Don now, or do you need another nomination for the second person?
Oh, you, you vote one at a time.
Yeah, we'll do one at a time. So, all right, Don Doreto's been nominated, and we're gonna vote on him. If he gets a majority, he gets one of the two appointments. So, Virginia, roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Alahal?
Yes.
Mr. Nicole?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes. Okay. So, we have two remaining.
I would like to nominate Steve Ahmed.
Okay. So we have a nomination for Stephen Ahmed, and Virginia, roll call again, please?
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Alahal?
Yes.
Mr. Nicole?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes. Okay, so, we have filled both positions, thank you, Mr. Hope, for your letter of interest. So, we're gonna move in, move on to the Recreation Advisory Board, there are three two-year appointments to expire on May 21st, 2022. We have one letter of interest, and that was from Mr. Jack King. Do we have any other nominations? Do we have, wanna nominate anybody else?
I'll nominate Brett Anderson.
Is he interested? We didn't get a lot of interest, did we?
No, we didn't. But yes, he is interested, but I have a question, do we not, we used to send out letters, letting people know that their times have expired. In fact, the EDC one expired last September, and the, these recreation wards, they expired last May, so people really were confused as to when they were, when their terms were up. So I'm just suggesting that we continue what we used to do before, and send out letters to, to current, to current board members, and to see if there is an interest.
Okay. Do we have anybody else who'd like to nominate somebody?
Who, do we know who, who's on the board that term is expired, that may be interested for the third spot?
Person's name is.
There's one, Brett was, Brett Anderson was one, Kyle, I'm gonna put you this name, we're not.
Bro.
Is it Bro, okay, sorry about that. And Noel Sperry. Those were the, those were the positions that were up.
I don't think we can put in words in any of their mouths if they're interested or not, so.
Right.
Another meeting to do it if they.
Okay, that's fine, they haven't been meeting because of COVID, so hopefully.
Take that off. So just saying.
I don't know, do we wanna pull it, do we wanna appoint them, or we wanna pull it and wait till next month, or the month after?
I, I thought Justin was suggesting that we wait because we haven't heard from them, I don't, maybe I misunderstood.
I'm suggesting. I think, I think we could wait until next month, because I don't think there's gonna be lots of recreational activities going on during COVID, so.
And during the winter either, so, all right, I'm, I'm okay with that, so.
Yeah, I'm fine nominating one person who sent in a letter who's on top of it and who's interested.
And Nancy Brett said, Brett told you he was interested?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm fine with nominating Brett.
I'm sorry, that was just today, so I wasn't, I didn't even have an opportunity to send anything, I just said, okay, I'll nominate tonight, but that was, that's it.
Okay.
So, but whichever way, you know, whatever the pleasure the council is, that doesn't matter, I mean, I, I do.
I'm good with nominating the two who expressed interest.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have, currently have two nominations for three positions, so we're gonna do Mr. King first. All, we'll do a, all in favor?
Aye.
I didn't hear you, I didn't hear you, Ted.
I'm sorry. So we're gonna do Mr. King first, since it's two positions for there, we just, we just need a voice vote. So Mr. King, we're doing a voice, a voice vote, so it's all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Extension? All right, Mr. King, welcome aboard, and next is Brett Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye. Mr. Bowers.
Okay. Abstentions? All right. Welcome aboard, Mr. Anderson, we'll welcome aboard again. So, last is the Zoning Hearing Board, which is a, which is a three-year term to expire on January 2nd, 2023. We have one letter of interest, Suzanne Zunkowski.
Mr. Parker, before we move forward, I have a comment that I could make.
Go ahead.
Considering we recently entered into a, basically a lawsuit with the county and the hearing board, I, it's my personal preference that we would put this off until such time as we actually meet in executive session, and at least discuss a little more in detail of what's going on there, before we replace anyone or put anyone back on the board.
I second that, Justin.
I disagree with that, Mr. Parker, because you need to have, you need to have, your board filled completely.
Don't we have an alternate?
We still have, we still have an alternate.
But you only have that alternate for a couple more weeks.
Right.
We can, we can vote next month for, for the new position.
Mr. Flager, does our zoning board person keep serving until they're replaced?
No.
Okay.
Is that the only one that doesn't? Seems like all of our other committees have stayed on till whenever.
Right.
Probably back to the service.
I'm not understanding the resistance, I, I don't know. And you could explain it to me, but I, but if I can ask also, before we talk about that, it's one three-year term to expire on 1/2/23. to expire on one, two, twenty-three. So, that really wouldn't be three years unless they're going by her, um, like, the, the term expires, it actually expired on the second of this month. So, it should go, it should say twenty-four instead of twenty-three. That's what I believe. Anybody agree with that, or, I mean, it's a three-year term, so it should be twenty twenty-four?
I'm just going by what's written down.
I make a motion to table this one until next month.
And motion to table, was there a second? Is there a second?
There was no motion to.
There's no motion.
There's nothing to table.
Well, appointing the person, making this appointment?
No one made a motion to appoint.
Okay, I moved to appoint, I moved to appoint, so actually that's the motion, but it, uh,
I brought up a comment and discussion first before we went into it.
Well, we have a table. We can't have any more discussion until we decide the table.
But we're not taking anything, because there's nothing that we've moved on.
Yes, we moved, we moved on to accept.
Hang on a second, hang, hang on a second. We have a motion and a second? Is that what we have? I heard a motion, did I hear a second, to appoint somebody?
Uh, let's check the tape on that one. I, um, it was a little while back.
Well, we didn't have, we were nominating people, we didn't have a nomination, so, uh, at this point, if anybody wants to discuss, go ahead.
Nancy, I'll further along, my, my comment is, as far as I understand it, the borough has entered into this legal thing, uh, with, basically, to work with the zoning hearing board, and they've claimed it for whatever you would call them in this case, uh, because there's stuff that the zoning hearing board might have done incorrectly. And it's my, that's my understanding of it, without going too deep in detail, and that's why I would like to discuss it more as litigation, um, before I either choose to appoint the same person to the hearing board, or don't choose to appoint the same person to the hearing board. That's my logic.
I, I appreciate that info, because I'm not familiar with something that they've done that was inappropriate. Um, so, and I guess Randy can't speak on it now, um, but, can we have any detail that would guide us here?
So, that's why Justin's asking for an executive session, because he's not saying something was done incorrectly. He's saying that there might have been, because that's the information we have. We don't know if something was done incorrectly or not at this point, because we haven't had an executive session to discuss it, and because of, because of it falling under a legal matter, we really can't discuss it publicly.
Randy, could you weigh in, please?
Well, sure. Oh, what?
I was gonna say, what if we discuss it when we have our exec session and come back out?
I just wanted, I just want an opinion as to whether or not we, we should nominate, or we should be pulling it.
I, if, if, my, my, I agree with what, I, I agree with Justin. I think we should, um, we should pull this. I, we have an alternate that's gonna be on the board, so, and I don't know, I mean, if the, in our packet last week, it said the February zoning board meeting was canceled already, so it's, they're not even having a meeting next month, so, um, I, I agree with what Justin said.
All right, we're gonna pull it. We'll wait till next month. Wait a minute.
I, I'm not understanding this.
I don't understand what just happened. I don't understand what the objection is. I don't understand, we, we're, we're doing this without any information. I don't know what the, what the allegation is even. Um, could I at least hear from the solicitor as to framing what the issue is? To the extent that it's, it's, it can be discussed publicly?
I, I didn't make the objection. I, I, I mean, there is, there was a zoning hearing board decision that the decision went against a party who appealed it. We've intervened, and we, we've had some discussions, and we're not, we're gonna be discussing it in executive session eventually, when we try to, we're, we're still working out, we're still fighting with them, as to see if we can come up with a, a happy medium, a solution where everybody compromises a little bit. We're not there yet, and, um, that's all, that's all I can tell, publicly, that's all I should say now, but I have nothing to do with, I just might, I, I'm not involved with whether you object or don't object to this. That's completely a council decision. You're free to appoint or not to appoint, as you choose.
Well, I guess, I don't understand what the controversy is. As I understand it, from, from our early, from, from conversations and discussions, both at the meetings and in between, um, that, that the, the borough solicitor is representing the borough in a three-way negotiation along with the zoning hearing board and the, uh, and the resident who is challenging their decision. They're negotiating a settlement. It's got nothing to do with any kind of wrongdoing or malfeasance or misfeasance by any member of the zoning hearing board, as far as I know, and I, and I think that there's a suggestion that they, that there's some wrongdoing, and therefore, we should replace the member, and I don't think that's got anything to do with what the issue was.
I, I never said there was any wrongdoing. I.
No, I know you didn't, but I.
I'm not, I never, I never inferred, implied, or, yeah, I'm not saying there was anything improper.
The, the problem that, that Justin's bringing up, though, is we, none of us know, right? So that's because we haven't had a, an executive session on this. None of us know what the situation is, and I think that's why he's concerned about bringing this to vote right now, when we've not had any actual, when we don't have the information, because, Mr. Paul, you don't have any more information than I have. So, his concern is that we just don't know. So, I think that's, Justin, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, that's your, your concern here, correct?
Yes, my concern is, from what I've gathered, we've gone into this court issue because of some decisions that the zoning hearing board has made. But we haven't discussed them in any length, and, and we're doing executive session to find out exactly why, and that's what I want, before I decide whether I want to keep somebody who may or may not have made that decision. I don't know what the votes were on the zoning hearing board, if it was three-zero, two-one, and what the issues are that we're going to court for. So, I'd like to know that before I either say, hey, I'm gonna keep this person on there and doing a good job, or no, I'd like to see somebody else on there, because I don't think they did such a great job. I'm not saying there's any malfeasance, I'm just saying maybe they made a bad decision, maybe they didn't. I don't know at this point, because we haven't had executive session to talk about a legal issue that we voted to go into.
Mr. Parker, that zoning board is guided by the zoning attorney, so I would imagine that if the decision that they've made, it's, it, my understanding, now, I didn't attend the meeting, but I know there were council people that attended that meeting, but, um, the decision that they made was within the parameters of the decision that they're allowed to make, as far as I understand. And also, the municipal planning code, the Pennsylvania municipal planning code, basically says that council should keep their distance from the zoning commission, uh, to, to, to be, I'm not saying you don't eventually get involved, especially when the attorneys are involved and find out the information, but, um, it's, the concern would be, uh, that there'd be decisions or influence from council i- in how the zoning, um, makes their decisions. And I just want to make sure that that's not, well, of course, that that is not happening, and then we leave that up to the attorneys to, uh, to guide them correctly. Uh, but, uh, so, that's my say. So, I, I'm not in favor of, of waiting, uh, but I don't know that I'm the majority. So, you know, you can move forward whichever way you want, but I do believe that if you pull it, that's fine, but if we keep it, we need to fix the date. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, can I, can I ask, though, because I can't do a playback, where, where, where are we here? Like, if there was, like,
No one has made a motion.
We were at the point where I was.
Right, there's been no nomination, so the motion hasn't been made.
Say that again?
There has been no motion to appoint anyone to this position, so either someone has to make a motion now, or we just move on.
Well, I'll make the motion to appoint Suzanne Zukowski, for one three-year term to expire on one, two, twenty-four.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I make a motion to table.
We have a motion to table. We have a second.
Motion to table takes priority. There's no debate, it's just a vote.
All right, roll call vote, Virginia. Motion to table, yes or no?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. LaHoe?
Yes.
Mr. Nicole?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
No.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
No. So, the motion to table passes, so this is, uh, tabled until it's untabled.
Could I just have, Helen made the motion to table. Who seconded that? Justin?
Yes, Mr. Bowers.
Thanks.
All right, uh, appointments are done. Moving on to ten unfinished business. I'm aware, not aware of any unfinished business. Virginia, do we have any?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So, moving on to eleven, new business. Virginia, do we have any new business?
Not that I'm aware of.
Council, do we have any new business? All right, hearing none. Twelve, comments from borough officials.
Mr. Parker? Okay.
Who's going?
Uh, I'll go first. I usually wait to last. I'll go first once. Um, one, I'd just like to wish Mr. Mitchell well. Uh, hope everybody keeps him in their thoughts and prayers. Two, I'd like to suggest that for next month or the upcoming months, that we put together some sort of online Q and A session and presentation of the comprehensive plan, uh, either the borough or the planning commission, for the residents. I mean, I think it would be beneficial after borough council gets a presentation of what the changes are, um, that that presentation be given to the public, and given some time as well to digest it, and then maybe have another Q and A session for the public, for anybody who's gonna read through that two-hundred-page book, uh, and has questions. And since the planning commission wrote them, um, I, I think they said that they already had some sort of, uh, open presentation. I'm assuming it was probably at the building, because I don't remember seeing Zoom, uh, so I think we should utilize our online presence, like we did for the Williamson Park presentation, so that anybody who wants to be involved online can be. That's it for me.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Uh, a couple things. One, um, uh, yes, thank you, Justin, regarding Scott, keeping him in our prayers, and also the, um, the comprehensive plan, I did want to bring that up. So, I agree with all of that with regards to questions and answers and so forth. I have read, uh, most of it, but not all of it, and I did ask Mr. Parker if he could pull that until such time that we all were able to weigh in on it. Um, but I have to tell you, this plan is bipolar. It has, it's a, it just goes, uh, there's so many, um, times when it actually, um, it, it, it says one thing, and then the next page will say something else. So, it's, it's, it's not really in, as, in sync as I'd like to see it. Um, and, but I do, I appreciate the planning commission's work that they've done. I know that that's not easy. Like you said, it's a hundred and thirty pages, or whatever it is, um, and they do do a good job. And of course, we have the planning commission, the county, a help, uh, but I do think that it needs more, a little more scrutiny, and, um, I'm glad that we're going to, or hope everybody agrees, that we'll be able to bring this out to the public and discuss it a little bit more. So, and finally, I'd like to say thank you to those who not only put up the decorations for Christmas, but recently, I guess this past weekend, they ended up taking them down. I'm not sure who did that, but I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Uh, I'm down at the Robert Morris Plaza.
No, the one thing I, I'd like to say about that, um, planning commission, is I think they have to be a little, as Nancy said, but, uh, sometimes they refer to the Tate and Lyle, uh, property as Tate and Lyle, and sometimes they refer to it as Staley's. I think there has to be Tate and Lyle across the board.
Yes, there, there are a number of inconsistencies, so hopefully we'll get through them all. Thanks, Helen.
Um, I, just one real quick for me, um, to echo what, uh, earlier in the, in the night with Ted welcoming Dwayne. Um, I'd like to welcome Dwayne. Thank you for, um, for stepping up. Um, it's a thankless job, and, um, again, thanks for doing it. And, um, Helen, if you look, look over to your left right now, how's, uh, is Dwayne holding up? How was, you make it to the first meeting okay, or?
I think he's gonna come back next month.
He's gonna come back next month. Excellent, excellent. Thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, uh, we're gonna adjourn the meeting, because there should, there'll be nothing to vote on at the, uh, exec session, but we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a brief recess, so that, uh, Terry, our IT guy, can go ahead and secure the Zoom. So, uh, I'm sorry?
Do you need a motion to close?
Yes, we, uh, motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay. Meeting's adjourned. Give us a few minutes, don't go far.